Then her boyfriend went up and they cut it down because they had to drop it into her yard.
Good evening. The October 19th, 2022 Board of Education Special Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
Director Newman.
We've called a special meeting this evening to meet with Hazard, Young, Atiya, and Associates, and begin our discussion concerning the Board Superintendent's search process. This time, I'll turn the meeting over to Peter Flynn.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Probably need to move that mic.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. You can do that now.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and we're honored to be here and to assist you in this most important endeavor you're about to undertake. And my teammates are online, I hope. I know Kelvin Adams is on his way to the Council of Great City Schools in Orlando, Florida, and he wasn't able to get a connection from here or even the Quad Cities to get there by tomorrow morning so he could be on a panel with his board members. And so that's where he is. And Kelvin, can you hear me? Oh, they're working on Kelvin. And Chris is finishing up a tour of the East Coast that started out in New York and went up to Canada. And I don't know where she is now, but she's still at sea. So apologize, but we weren't expecting this fast turnaround when we made the proposal. And we're just happy to be here. Nevertheless, they have been participating with me in the development of what we're going to do tonight. And so that's where they are. And we can say that at least two of us, for the rest of the steps of the search, will be with you throughout the search. And we represent, I think you know what our backgrounds are, but you know that we represent more than 50 years in the superintendency, working with school boards, plus the work that we've been doing with Hazard, Young, and Atiya as well. So we laid out on the next slide basically what we want to try to do tonight in terms of our objectives, and that is to go through the entire search, all the tasks, all the activities, the calendar, and with the understanding that this is our search process that we use. We have modified it in a couple of ways, and I'll point those out as we go. But you may have some things that you want us to do a little differently, and that's fine with us. We'll explain to you why we do the way we do and why we make the recommendations that we do. But it's your search, and if you want to change some of the things as a board, we defer to you in that regard. We'll tell you what our experience is and what seems to work best. But ultimately, it's your search. And again, the three of us are the primary consultants. We don't anticipate anybody else working on the search, but all three of us are going to work as fully as our schedules allow. And then the outcome of tonight's meeting, we're hoping we'll accomplish all of those 20 things that we sent you in the agenda outline. But the idea is to have a search that's customized for Cedar Rapids, and also to develop that calendar that fits your schedules as well. We put some possible dates out there, and we're going to ask for your feedback so that we have maximum participation by the board throughout, and that you feel comfortable in understanding the steps of the process and what our responsibilities are and what your responsibilities are. And then we put a lot of emphasis on the leadership profile, and we'll talk more about that as we go. And it's, once you adopt the leadership profile, that becomes the critical focus point for all the metrics and everything else that we do in terms of screening, interviewing, and selection. So we'll talk about that as we go along. And then we'll ask you some specific things about communications and the board liaison for the search, and so on. Now, one thing is the board portal. This is where we keep all the documents from the search. So following this meeting, we'll create a summary of this meeting, and we'll put that in the board portal. Now, we'll tell you when we've done that. And before we tell you that we've done that, we'll send you a link for the board portal. And the link will be sensitive to your email address. You give us the email address, and we're assuming for starters that they're all school district email addresses. So those specific email addresses for this district will be sensitive to you and yours. And so that's all you need to get into the portal. And once you're in there, you'll see eventually the summary of this meeting. You'll see the leadership profile report that we present to the board. I think it's on the 21st of November. And you'll also see a lot of tools that are available. Suggested interview questions, for example, are in there. Some things that you can't ask about in interviews, that's in there, and things of that nature. So it's a great source, and it's for those moments where you say, well, what did I do with that? Hopefully, it's in the portal. And if you ever say, what did I do with it, you can always ask us. Because we'll have, if you say, well, where was that link? We can get the link for you again, because we'll have the link too. Okay? So we can access it too. But we actually go through a third, an office person who puts things into the portal. So that's how that works. Okay so far with the portal?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions about that?
So only the board, and no one else has access?
Correct. Unless you decide at some point that you want somebody else to join you and be part of that exclusive group. So you can think about that, and you can talk among yourselves about that as you want to, and where it's appropriate, you can let us know. And again, we'll just tell the people that control the system, here's another person to add with access to it. Okay? Did somebody just join us?
Possible.
Sounds like it. Kelvin, can you hear us?
Yeah. I can't hear you right now. This is Chris. Chris can only go through my cellphone right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Hello, Chris.
Hi.
Great. I'm going to turn this up a little bit.
Yeah. We'll put you near a microphone here.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And we're trying to get Kelvin in the room as well.
Hello?
Oh, we can hear you, Kelvin.
Yes, I can. Good afternoon, everyone.
Yeah, good afternoon. And you might have to speak up just a little bit more.
Not a problem at all.
Thank you. Okay. And we're on the slide about the, we were just finishing up talking about the portal. Was there anything else on the portal we wanted to talk about? Okay. So we'll get that in action, and we'll get those email addresses to Nancy Perez and Stephanie Noak, who are the two people in the staff at the office that work with us, and we'll get those, the link to you soon.
Okay. Well, Laura, will you make sure that that happens?
Send it to you, and then, well, you'll give me the email.
I'll send you the email addresses, yes.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Easy.
Okay. So next is board liaison during the search. Now, generally speaking, we'll communicate to all members of the board all the time, but if there's something that comes up between meetings, it's good to have somebody designated as the liaison from the board to the search firm. It's usually the board president, but it's your decision to decide how you want to, how do you want to use that, and who will be the liaison. And if we have questions, as I said, between meetings, we'd contact that person. And if anybody asks us any questions, we give the answers to all the board members. Right? So everybody knows what's asked and what's answered, yes. How about on the liaison?
I'm happy to serve in that role.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And then on the next slide is our list of who the people are. So it's Peter Flynn, Kelvin Adams, and Chris McCastro. And Kelvin's telephone number, there's a typo there. It's correct on the last page of the PowerPoint, but it's incorrect on that. It should be 314-541, not 2, 1165, but it's correct on the last page of your PowerPoint. I apologize for the typo. And Stephanie Noak is relatively new to HYA, but she's an experienced person in the field, and she's the project manager for the search. And Nancy Perez is the chief operating officer for us, and she's very helpful on just about anything you could ask her about. So those are two resources, as well as the three of us. And we have our names, email addresses, and telephone numbers there for a reason. We're available to you. You don't have to just talk to me. You can talk to any one of the three of us that you prefer to talk to. And of course, they'll tell us that you've called, and they'll share with us what they've told you and keep us in the loop. So we operate as a team, and feel free to call any of us to ask questions or to tell us something. Okay? Okay. Now, this one, we want to talk a little bit about the whole idea of confidentiality. First, in terms of community engagement. I'll give you a little preview of community engagement. The community engagement for us involves five questions, and we ask the five questions of everybody. So when we do a one-on-one with you, we'll ask you those five questions. If we have a group of students from your high schools, we'll ask them the same questions. So same questions. Goes like this. Talk to us about the strengths of the Cedar Rapids School District. And the second question, talk about the challenges that are facing the school district currently or looking forward over the next five years or so. And the third question is, given the strengths and challenges as a context, what are the best characteristics, the most critical characteristics for this school district at this point in its history going forward? And we break that down for people. We say, think about the personal attributes that they have as individuals, as people, regardless of their role. And then, secondly, talk to us about the expertise and education experience that this person should have. And finally, talk to us about the best administrative style that might work best in the school district at this time. So those are the questions that we ask in every session that we do. And we don't attribute names to those answers that we get. So when we write up our report, we don't identify an administrator, or a teacher leader, or anybody specifically. We combine those responses that we got so that there is a bit of anonymity to that. But the person is there talking to us in person, and so it's not that anonymous, but it is not mentioned or attributed to any one individual when we write up the report. So now, speaking of that, there's also the surveys. Well, I'll wait to talk about that. That's coming up in just a couple of minutes, so I'll wait to talk about that. The second confidentiality has to do with the candidate privacy. If we get to the point where we've gone through the application, recruitment, and screening process, and we bring to you a slate of candidates, we recommend that there's an assurance given to the applicants, potential candidates, that their application will be confidential. And the reason for that is that, as we mentioned in our proposal, most of the searches that we've done, the person that was ultimately hired by the board did not originally apply for the job. They were, in fact, recruited. They were recruited based upon the profile because we went to look for people that were good at doing the things in that profile. And these people were so good that they weren't necessarily looking for another job. They were content where they were. They were being valued by the people for whom they were working, and they weren't looking for another job. But when we began to tell them about the job, they expressed an interest. And almost the first, second, and third question is, is it a confidential search? Is my name going to be out there that I'm looking for another job? You can understand that if somebody is comfortable and successful where they are, it might not bode well for them if they were to publicly say that they're looking for another job. So that being the case, we recommend that we'll probably get more and better qualified people if it is a confidential search. Now, people will say, well, where's the transparency in that? The transparency comes with the reassurance that we're listening to people. We're listening to people carefully about what they say you should be looking for in the next superintendent. And they'll be able to see that in the process that we use. We chart everything that people say to us, and that strange challenges and characteristics conversation that we have with them. And in addition to that, we bring that information to you in a report that says, when we talked with administrators, they said these kinds of things. When we talked to teachers, and so on. So we list them by categories in the report. So there is transparency in the aspect of, we're listening to people, and here's what they're telling us. Then we bring that to you at a public meeting on November 21st. I keep saying, I think that's the date. Yeah. On November 21st, we bring that to you in a public board meeting and say, here's what people said to us. And it's going to be a 10-page summary of a 40-page report, and it will list what we heard. And it will distill down the things that we heard most frequently, and we'll share that with you. And then the board will talk about that and discuss it and prioritize that in the description of the next superintendent in that profile. And so the process is inclusive. It listens to a lot of people. We have not only the listening sessions, but in a district the size, we'll get probably well over 1,000 responses to the online survey. And the online survey, again, asks people, what should, what are the most critical attributes and competencies of the next superintendent? It'll also ask them what they think about certain aspects of the school district. So there's the transparency part of that. It's also a thorough process as well, with the background checks and the background that we do, as well as the one that we suggest that you do toward the end of the process. But it's up to you, and if you want to talk a little bit more about confidential search.
I mean, I think if a confidential search is going to get us the best candidates, I think that's the right way to go.
So are you saying with other searches, that you've overseen the confidentiality? I mean, because I know that's one of the things people are saying, what are you guys doing? Who are you interviewing? Who has applied? And I know that will be questions that will be asked. But then I do understand if folks are not actively looking for a job, how the confidentiality would be of importance.
Yes.
But you're saying it's best to do it, have a confidential, keep it confidential.
Yes.
Until we have decided on who we want to interview.
And the law, the law, and as you know, the law allows in Iowa for you to do that if the candidate requests a confidential discussion with the board. And so, but we recommend that highly.
So I just want to make sure I understand. Typically, in searches like this, you see that three candidates maybe have our finalists, and their names are disclosed. You are suggesting we do not do that, and we do not announce anything until it's, that person has been selected and has been, has accepted?
Yeah. There are some searches that are done the way you described. The last one that I worked on in, two years ago in Ankeny, we did a confidential search, and none of the applicants were disclosed except for the person that got the job. That worked out well there, but that doesn't mean that that's what you have to do. You can do a different approach.
Got it.
Go ahead.
So during the search, at any time, would the community meet these candidates if we keep it all confidential?
Not as a, not as a public meeting. There have been confidential meet and greets that we've done, where for the three people that you narrowed it down to, were met individually by a small group of representative people from the school district. So we've done that. And they sign a confidential, confidentiality agreement so that they will keep private the names of the people with whom they spoke. So we've done that kind of thing as well. As a matter of fact, we did that in Ankeny.
I was going to say, is there, have you had much, so with the three finalist approach, I assume that would be, you know, that could be an approach where we keep them confidential, who's under consideration until finalists would be announced. Have you seen, have you done ones like that? And have you seen like a difference in candidate quality if you've had that kind of two-step process where we wouldn't just say, here's the 10 people or whatever that we're recruiting, but?
Yes. I have seen that. I've done that. And the answer to your other question is, the quality of the candidate pool diminishes.
Is it possible that we do sort of a hybrid where we say, we're not going to disclose anyone's name until we get to the last three? Or you're not recommending that either?
You can, you can do that, but I think that
So that
some people might pull out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's going to diminish the quality. So I do think that the idea that you would have a confidentiality, you know, like people sign confidentiality agreements, so beyond just this board, some folks from the community would have that opportunity to meet
You could do that, yeah.
candidates. But as long as the candidates are guaranteed that confidentiality, because even in the case of the three, you're going to have two people that don't get the job, and then they're going to go back to their district and be disadvantaged in that role. So I certainly would advocate for a confidential search, but I think that we should consider doing something like that, a confidential meet and greet. I think that's a good compromise for this.
That sounds okay.
The only thing on that that I would advocate for then is that it be a confidential meet and greet, so to speak, but with some pretty wide groups. I mean, we're asking, it's kind of like, a lot of people know a secret, and that's not always so confidential, right? But not disclosing names, say, to the media. But I think that we do need a wider group to be able to meet with the final candidates.
Well, let's keep talking about this as we go through, and but it appears that at least for the beginning stages, you're comfortable with the
I think from the aspect of transparency in the community, that's certainly something that we hear about. It's a way that we can actually get. But to your point, I mean, I think that the more people hear about the leadership profile and the amount of feedback that we're getting on the front end, you know, hopefully, the majority of people in the community feel that their voice is heard. Any additional opportunities, I think people would welcome those. But I'm with you, Director Newman. I mean, a diverse group of people from the community, but obviously valuing confidentiality and understanding why that is required.
I mean, respect to every point, but do you think it's possible to have a group of people and keep it confidential? I mean, this, I'm not downing anybody's idea.
Yeah.
With all due respect, do you think that's absolutely possible, that we can have 10 people in a room and nobody's going to say nothing?
How did that work in Ankeny?
Well, I think it worked okay. I don't think the names got out of who the three people were.
How many, how many people were in that room, do you think?
About 15.
So let's keep talking about it. I think it's something worth considering, so let's figure out a way if it's possible to do it.
Made a note to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So just generally speaking about what you know about or you've seen in the materials that we've given you so far, if you see any parts of the four phases that we go through, you know, the engage, screen, recruit, select, and transition, if you see anything, questions?
Before we move on, I just have one question about the community engagement. Before we move on, I just have one question about the community engagement. Are there two separate tracks of community input? One with the five questions, and then the other is an online survey? Or is that one?
There are two things. Bless you. And you reminded me, I didn't tell you questions four and five. I told you that one, two, and three, and I didn't tell you four and five. Question number four is, why would somebody want to be the superintendent? What would attract people to be the superintendent, the next superintendent of schools in Cedar Rapids? So we ask them that question, and the reason for that is to help us with the recruitment part, because people will tell us stuff about the community and things about the school district, and that's very useful. And then the fifth question is, do you know of somebody that might fit this profile that we've just talked about? And by the way, before people leave the room, we do a sticky dot exercise. We give each person in the room three sticky dots and ask them to put them next to the characteristics that are most mission critical. It's similar to what happens on the survey. The survey has 12 research-proven competencies for successful superintendents. And you want all 12, but you have a forced choice if you're going to only pick four. So that helps narrow things down, and where those, on the charts that we use in the listening session, where those get clustered, that tells us something about those characteristics. And that also gives an opportunity for people that don't feel comfortable speaking up in groups. It gives them a voice, as it were.
So.
Yes.
Just to follow up on that, so the community engagement would be more geared towards the school community? Or are we talking Cedar Rapids Community School District, everyone out there?
You'll see, we're going to suggest some groups for the community engagement, that it is people in the community, and you know that in your community, about 60 to 70% or maybe more of the people who live and work in your community don't have kids at school. So you have that group of people. You have people that work here but don't live here. You have parents of students in the school district and other parents of schools not in the school district. So the idea is to bring all of those people in for listening sessions.
Okay.
Either in an open forum or in a specific group that's invited.
And then is it more or less up to us to sort of weight the opinions or the responses that we're getting?
Yes, you can do that as well. And of course, the board is a group, too. And the same holds true with the survey. So the survey, it's online, it's open, anybody can take it. And so, and again, you'll talk about the groups that you want identified in the survey.
Thank you. That was my question. Who are these community people? Where are you going to get them from? What do they look like? Why will they be here? Like, who are the community?
Well, you're going to tell us that in just a couple of, did I skip over that? No, you're going to tell us that in just a couple of minutes. We're about four slides away from doing that. Okay? So let me go quickly to the calendar. At Your Places is a kind of maybe a little clearer version of the calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Now, there's a mistake. It says planning meeting will take place next week, and it's obviously taking place tonight.
He's got the bigger version of it. You should have a big disk.
Oh, this one here? Oh, okay. Same thing.
Do you have that text?
I can see that one.
Okay. So just let's talk about these dates a little bit and see if this is realistic for you. We, I don't know if you had a chance to bring your calendars with you, but we suggested that maybe you'd have both your personal and work calendars with you. What are your thoughts? The idea would be to come back the week of November 7th, which would give almost two weeks to let people know about the meetings, publicize whether there's going to be an open meeting that anybody can come to, where it's going to be held, and so on. Invite people to meetings because of groups that you identify in just a few minutes. And we think that it takes usually about two weeks to get the word out and get people to come to those meetings. And so we're meeting here on Wednesday, so two weeks from now. If we had people come in on, say, Thursday and Friday of that week of November 7th, that would be, that would give people a good notice, and they would feel good about that, that you've given them time to prepare and put on their calendar.
Since we're having the planning meeting tonight earlier, is it possible to move up the date of that online survey opening?
Oh, yeah. We can open the online survey.
Maybe Monday is the 24th, like even that?
Absolutely. We could open an online survey, yeah, that'd give us tomorrow, Friday, to make preparations and get the link to your people and also.
And still keep it open till the 12th, so you just get a few extra.
Absolutely. Yeah.
24th through the 12th, yeah? And so what would you set as the expectation? Like, how many, the week of November 7th, when it's board and stakeholder engagement, how much time do you see that? Like, I mean, is this multiple days that something's going on, right?
Yeah, we can do typically six or seven meetings each consultant in a day.
Yeah.
So that's 12 to 14 meetings in one day if we have two consultants present. And we can do that, say, like on Thursday and Friday of that week. And what we typically would do is have a meeting in the evening that's open around 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. And then we've also had, with some participation, a meeting during the day that's open for parents and community people to come to, whose schedule might allow them to come during the day but not in the evening for whatever reasons. So a couple of open meetings, and then some specific focus group meetings or invitational meetings, or open meetings for specific groups, like for teachers or for support staff to come to. We'll talk about that. Probably can talk about that as we go, but so that's what we would do on those two days. It's also been suggested that we might want to offer an option to do a Zoom meeting. We like to keep the meetings 25 to 30 people, and if we get a bigger group showing up, we might want to split that group into two smaller groups so that we can give people ample opportunities to speak and respond to the questions.
How long are those meetings usually?
About 50 minutes. Yeah, we can do all that, ask those five questions, and be finished in 45 to 50 minutes. And we'll put together a template schedule that can be used, and you can tell us. Why don't we move ahead just to the next slide in your packet? Chris, you want to talk a little bit about these sessions?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening. In the listening sessions, we will be asking the same five questions that Peter mentioned to you earlier, and those are the questions that we use for every group that we put together. We will want to interview each of you individually, as well as anyone else in your district that you think needs to be included. There may be significant opinion shapers in your district or significant officials in your district, people like that who you think need to have some individual attention. We can add them to that group as well. And then, of course, we would want to do meetings for your central office administrators and also for your principals or your department heads, as you choose. Typically, you would have those separately. So you would probably have your administrator, your central office administrators in one focus group, and principals and others at that level in another focus group. And we also recommend that you include a wide range of other staff members, including support staff, teaching staff, others who need to be involved. And then, of course, we have in the past also done open meetings for support staff and for teachers. That allows people who, that allows you an opportunity to really hand-select the people who you think most represent their group, and they could be in a focus group. And then that could be followed by a larger group, open meeting where anybody could weigh in. So that's how we put those focus groups together. The community engagement activities, again, we can do those for your entire community and with the invitation out so that everyone knows they have an opportunity to come and to weigh in on the questions that we've been asking.
Just one comment. I would like us to consider a Zoom opportunity for the community.
Sure.
So anyway, we will want to know who the staff member is who will serve as our main contact. Peter mentioned that earlier. And that person, that individual will be the one who's preparing letters of invitation and scheduling those meetings, letting the participants as well as us know where and when those will be, and making sure the invitation out to them so that they have ample notice of when those meetings might be. We'll also be publicizing those meetings broadly so that everyone in the community knows what's happening. I think that that really adds to the time transparency that many people want to see, and I think the opportunity to weigh in in a public setting like that is very important. Then, of course, we will be asking the staff member or the liaison to us to provide us with any critical documents that are public information. That might include things like the superintendent's contract. If you have an existing strategic plan or something like that in place, we would want to review that. We would want to review annual goals and objectives. All of that information is going to help us fill out their profile so that we have the best possible information to go into completing that profile.
And I mentioned your strategic plan during the presentation last Monday night, and it's easy to get to. It's beautifully illustrated, and it's an amazing document, as I mentioned the other night. I just think you should be so proud of the way that was done and put together, and it's a great plan.
When we're setting up these community meetings, would they be here or are we going to go into the community?
Yeah, we can do both.
That they have, people have access, because I think some folks can't get here.
Good idea.
But really going into the communities.
Yeah, and we'll have, we'll have at least two of us here. We might have three of us here, but we'll have at least two of us here so that one could be located in this building and some in another building. You give us guidance on where you think those places ought to be in different parts of the community. We'd be glad to do that.
I have a question about the publicity. Is that, do you guys handle that aspect of that, or do you work with our comms team?
We work with your team, because it's really important that people perceive this as something that you're asking them to do. You're inviting them to be a part of this, as opposed to, hazard young, I tell you, who are they? You know, but if this is, the board is asked, the letter typically comes from the board president in most cases, but it can come from the board generally. That's a really good thing to have that outreach come from the district.
I understand that. I also don't want to strain our comms department, but Colleen's got it.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. So what do you think? Now, you don't have to be present for all these meetings. As a matter of fact, it's probably better if you're not there, because you don't want to get singled out by somebody who comes to talk to you about something. We want them to talk to us about things in general, strengths, challenges, and so on. But we'll arrange for you to sign up for a one-on-one, and I've got that here. But are those dates, does that seem reasonable if we did it on that Friday and Saturday of that week of the 7th?
Thursday, Friday, or Friday, Saturday?
Oh, excuse me, Thursday, Friday. Thursday, Friday.
So you're saying the 10th, 11th, and 12th?
Just the 10th and 11th. Excuse me.
10th and 11th, so then Thursday and Friday.
Yes.
Do you have a reason why you would recommend like a Friday and not like multiple days like earlier in the week? Is there anything that says like Thursday, Friday is the best two days, or?
No, it just gives us two weeks to notify people. That's what we were looking at there.
Two weeks, huh?
Yeah. But we could do a Zoom meeting at a different day or time as well.
Yeah.
Do something like, I know I could be available to do a Zoom meeting any day that week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so.
I just think there's many different types of options, so certainly here and loud and clear, the Zoom option, not just having meetings in this building, but throughout the entire community.
Yeah.
Making sure that's happening.
We just want to build in travel time for us so that we can get to them, and thank goodness, we all have GPS systems.
Right.
We'll be able to find them. And then in the process, you can also explain to us why that location and so on, so that we're attuned to that.
The 11th, that Friday, is Veterans Day?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a good impact, or it might, people might be off work, might make them more accessible.
Yeah. What, are the schools closed that day?
I don't think so. Would it be professional development day that day?
Yeah, because it's Friday. That's right.
I just wanted to ask on this, on the meetings, we have initiatives about recruiting staff members of colors, and we've had, you know, several issues about challenges faced by students of colors. Do you guys ever set up meetings specifically, you know, for the population of students of colors or staff members of colors?
We'd be glad to hold those meetings, and if you can help us identify how that ought to be done, we'd be more than happy to do that. And we have done that.
Okay.
Yes. I can think of some specific instances where we had Latino students and so on.
Yeah. I think that week works. So I mean, I think they're kind of figuring out when the dates are and when the locations are and all that stuff, and we can certainly sort that out here.
10th and 11th.
Not during the day.
I don't even know about the evening. No.
That's a problem.
So what do we look at? Earlier in the week? Or so if we don't have any rooms available in this building, then that certainly excludes that.
Well, that's okay. We can go someplace else.
I could go in the schools.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
Do we have any buildings where a bunch of people can ask?
I think we've got a few.
I'm just kidding.
So there's professional development going on in this building on the 11th?
Yeah, this building is busy like almost every single day of the week and evening.
But all the more reason to go out into the community and.
But that might be a built-in.
Could be.
Would there be people here that would be administrators that could come to a meeting here on those days or no? We don't have room for it, is that it?
Just availability. It looks like all theater rooms are booked for staff over at Cedar Rapids.
For what?
Like all the, I have no idea.
Well, we might have to just move that.
Yeah. We can figure out.
Yeah, we'll figure this out.
Yeah, okay. How about taking a look at the suggested groups? Because we want you to tell us, we don't need, we don't need you to tell us that we need to have a special meeting for this group or that group, because sometimes the synergy works best if you combine some groups, and we'll let the staff help us do that. But obviously, we're going to do administrators individually, and then is there anybody else that you think that we should? the synergy works best if you combine some groups, and we'll let the staff help us do that. But obviously, we're going to do administrators individually, and then is there anybody else that you think that we should interview one-on-one besides each member of the board?
I think there could be a few. I mean, I don't know if I name them now, but, you know, the thought that, you know, looking at some of the experience that you folks have in other communities, you know, if there's any key stakeholders, decision-makers, things like that.
Yeah, and some people suggest a mayor, or some people will suggest somebody else in the community who has been a partner with the school district and that kind of thing.
Well, and I think we should look at some of our partnerships.
Right.
That we, I think that will be important, that they're invited to the table.
Absolutely. And so down the list, central office administrators and then school and department-based administrators might be a couple of groups of people to invite. Then, support, support staff, open meeting, and then association or union leadership from the support staff, as well as leadership of the associate, the teacher association. And then have an open meeting where teachers could come, so it's after the school day so that they're available or for that. The same with the support staff. You might want to do an open meeting for the support staff after their workday. And then, students. We usually suggest a group of students, not necessarily, we'll let, we'll let the principals and administrators pick the students, but they don't have to be top-of-the-class students. It could be a cross-section of students, or it could be a student group of a specific interest or race or ethnicity, depending upon what you want to do in that regard. And then, you do have an educational foundation, right? Yeah, and so the leadership of that, usually, how big's the board of something like that?
There's about 10 to 15.
Yeah, so that'd be a nice group to bring in and, and talk to, listen to. And then if you wanted to get a combination of people, like former board members and clergy association leaders, PTA or PTO council. Sounds okay so far. Government leadership, and then service group leadership. Service group Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, groups like that.
Do you talk to those groups because they represent businesses that are interested in future workforce, or do you specifically look for business leadership too?
Both, yes. And I think the service, the service groups can bring a perspective, because they're always doing a lot of fundraising, and some of it's oriented toward children, and that might be something to think about, to invite them.
Is there a way, as we're thinking through this, who to invite that we could send suggestions to you?
Please.
With my invite.
Absolutely, yeah. Yes, and do it as soon as you can, and because then we'll put that all together and try to pull groups together. So tell us about specific things that you want to do, and of course, we'll communicate. Whoops. I think we lost somebody. I think we lost, we lost Chris. She's, she's out to sea, I think. So, so what do you think of the open meeting idea too as well? So one night we'll do an open meeting, and how about the daytime meetings? Does that sound like it might work, and we make that available? Okay, so, so we've got an idea for different kinds of groups, and then you're going to send us ideas. You've got email and my cellphone number, and you can, you can text me.
How soon do you need those? How soon do you need?
Oh, later tonight would be fine. No, tomorrow, Friday, that would be great. That would be ideal if we could get them by tomorrow, Friday. That way, we'll put together groups on a schedule. I'll send this, this just shows what might happen. This isn't the final template, but I'll send it around, and if you'd like to sign up for a one-on-one, you can do that too. So I wrote down November 10th, November 11th, right?
Yep.
So I get that right. And then, so you can pick an hour, and there'll be at least two of us here, and so there's two options for each hour that's there, and pick the time.
So you guys will physically be here when you interview us? Would the interviews be face-to-face?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we would, for this schedule, we would come in the night before and be ready to go first thing in the morning, well, eight o'clock, or we could, we could do something possibly earlier if that, if that's important. I mean, I don't want to get the bus drivers before they go out on the road. I'm not talking about that, but if there is a group.
At what point will all three of you, we want to meet all three, so is there a time where all three of you will be here?
I'm hoping that we'll all be here for these, for these days, yeah. Now, we're only supposed to do four consultant days for the contract, so if you don't squeal on us, we don't.
You got her back.
Thank you. But we'll try to have all three of us here on those days, yeah. And one of us, and we'll probably spread us out because of travel time and that kind of thing, so, yeah. Now, let's, oh, thank you. Let's look at this. So here's the survey information. So we're suggesting six groups, but the survey can only handle six groups. But if we did the board, bless you, if we did the board and had you do, instead of going online and doing the survey, we gave you a hard copy and you did it, and then gave it to us, we could hand tally seven, seven board members' surveys, right? And that way.
I'd be in favor of doing that.
Pardon?
Let's do that, so we can include more community.
Yes, so then you could include administrative board, and you could get students in there as well, so, but these are the, these are the six groups that would work there, and we would put the board on a hand tally. Does that make sense, the way we've got them grouped there, or is there another way to group people, or?
These are the groups where the five question?
No, these, this is for the survey.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the survey where people would go online and complete the survey. It takes about 10 minutes to do the survey. One of the options that we don't recommend, that used to be used and is still apparently an option, but I would not recommend it, is the open-ended question.
Right.
Any comments? And the reason for that is, it just, it becomes voluminous, and it sometimes mentions people's names, and it opens us up and you up to legal issues and that kind of thing. And so, we keep it kind of tight in that answer the questions that are there. Now, our emails are going to be out there, so people are going to know how to get in touch with us, and I wouldn't be surprised if I got a few emails. And that's okay, but that's something that we can control from our end. So anyway, do those six groups look like they make sense? Administrators, community, parents of students in the district, students, support staff, teachers, certified staff.
One question about the survey. Once you get past administrators and board, you start getting into bigger groups. Do you include demographic information, just to make sure that we're getting a representative, you know, set of answers from people?
Yeah, we could, so we could, we could ask people their zip codes, if that would be helpful or not.
Maybe there's only so many zip codes in there. Not that small here, so. I just, when we do our surveys, a lot of times, you know, we'll get 10, 15% response, which ends up being a lot of response, but when you've got a population of 20,000 or whatever, you worry, does that 10, 15% represent everybody?
Yeah.
You know, I definitely want it to be open, and everybody who wants to, you know, be able to add their opinion. I just want something to check it off, I guess. But if you can't do that, that's fine as well. It's just something to keep in mind for us, I guess.
What would be a way to do, to get at what you're talking about, Dexter?
I mean, you can include demographic questions in the survey. I don't know if that's something you can do.
You mean, ask, ask people their race, for example?
Race, age, you know, just, because then we'd have the overall data of what the students in the district demographically look like, and then we could compare it to the student survey.
Yeah.
In this case, so. I just know that we ran into those questions before, so.
What else besides race and age could we ask people? And we probably would have to give them a list and have them pick from the list, both, in order to, in order to quantify it and analyze it and pile it.
Right.
So, so it would be a closed, closed option kind of thing? Or we probably give them, don't want to answer. Some people don't want to answer, they want to tell you.
I'm just trying to think of the normal type of questions I see on surveys.
Okay, let me, let me see if we can't do that. That, that might, that might complicate getting it up and ready by the 24th, but I'll, I'll let you know, as the board liaison, I'll let you know tomorrow how long that's going to take to put those questions in.
Another question I have is, you know, because I know everything would be online. What about those in our community that don't have access, computer access? How do we reach that group of people in our community? Because sometimes I think their voices are not heard, because sometimes we assume everybody has a computer or even their phone.
Yes.
But trying to make sure that we reach that group, and I don't know if that's something we can do, but I'd like for us to think about that.
And, and the district could do it this way. If they identified some people who maybe didn't feel comfortable doing it or didn't have access, they could either provide them access and work them through going on a computer and taking the survey, or they could take a hard copy and have them complete that, and then somebody would have to input it into the survey so that it gets compiled and analyzed, right? Would that, would that be a workable thing?
I guess I don't know, but that's a concern I always have, because sometimes it's we, everyone assumes everybody has access.
I've, I've, I worked in East Aurora, Illinois, doing, doing their search, and that's exactly what they did. They had a group of parents who came into, who were, even though the survey is in Spanish or English, they didn't feel comfortable doing it either way, but the staff knew about this group of parents, and they invited them in, and it's a group, they gave them all a hard copy of it in Spanish, and they completed the survey, and then the staff inputed the survey into the system. And again, how long would it take to do that? It would take a while to have the people do it in a meeting, of course. It would take a few minutes to input the survey, less than 10 minutes for each survey to input it into the system. So it could be done.
Yeah.
Do you have some ideas of where it could be, where it should be done?
Maybe Lad Library, West Side Library.
Oh, the West Side Library, Lad Library. I think it, what, it closes what, at 7:30, the Downtown Library?
I mean, I'd say that you'd still catch some population there, that even though there's computers there, that's not what they're there for, but if they wanted the option to fill out a.
Wow, that's a good idea.
I also think too, I look at Hoover Elementary School, that could, might be a perfect place, because there are a lot of different languages spoken there to make sure we hear their voices too, everyone's voices. That's only a suggestion.
Yeah, I think it would be good if we could make an extra effort at Hoover to invite families like to Hoover. It's a place they're familiar with, and I think they would be more likely to come there than to come here or another building. And yeah, there would be a lot of languages spoken.
Also, we always send out English, Spanish, Swahili, and French. So we have built lists for each of those languages, so we have a system where we send each language out, so that's an expansion beyond English and Spanish.
Okay.
I do think Hoover is a good.
Great, thank you. Okay, and so, we're going to shoot for the 24th through November 12th, and then, yeah, so is Colleen the first one?
Yes.
Okay, for this, for this, okay. All right. Talk a little bit about candidates. So we've talked, so we suggest for the first round that we bring you five or six people and then tell you who came close. Now, here's what we do to get down to that five or six people. We look at all the applications, we reach out and recruit people, and we invite them in for a screening interview. Now, let's, let's say, for example, you, you end up in your profile indicating that you're looking for an instructional leader who's been successful with diverse student populations, and has done that in a collaborative approach to working with the staff. So I'm just focusing on one characteristic right now. So what we would do is, we would find people like that who are successful at it and invite them for an interview, and ask them how they did their work. And if they can articulate how they did it, and it seems to reflect a collaborative approach, we pursue it a little further and say, have you established a track record of success in your work? And if they say yes, tell us about that. And then, can you give us some evidence of that? Do you have a graph, or do you have a PowerPoint presentation, or something that's concrete that shows the data from your school that indicates success in your schools with children in a diverse student population? So that's the second thing, ask for evidence. And then the third thing is, talk not just with people who are on their reference list, and we talked about this during our presentation, but go beyond that reference list and talk to people who are familiar with the work and say, did this person actually lead that? Or was that something that was started by somebody else, and they just happened to be in the right place? Or did they prove it, make it better, continue it, and so on? And so that's the depth which we go after each of the major characteristics that you've identified in your profile. So when we get through with the screening, we try to find the people who are best representative of the profile and whatever other characteristics that you've shared with us that are important to you. And we'll bring to you five or six people like that, and then we'll say, and here's who's number seven, eight, nine, and why they're not included in that group. And you might say, we want to talk to number eight instead of number four. And so you have control over who you talk to. We recommend that you don't go, we've had people do seven, but if you're going to do it in a short period of time, they kind of run together a little bit, and it's better to do five or six if you can. We also recommend that you not try to do all in one shot, that you spend a marathon day talking to six or seven people. We don't, we don't recommend that. We're going to recommend a, an interview that's going to last about an hour and a half to an hour and 45 minutes for each person. for each person in each round. And therefore, five or six, how does that slate size sound to you? We'll also present to you an overview of the pool. We'll, we'll talk to you about the minority mix, the male female mix, the superintendent, non-supervendant mix and that kind of thing in the pool. And then you can compare that with the people in the slate.
When that's being narrowed down, will we see the names as we're narrowing that down further? Or is it confidential and we don't see those names either?
We, we can do it, we can do it a couple of ways. What we typically do is we tell you an overview of, of the group. We share with you the names of the people that are serious contenders and, and that's, that's who we bring to you. Yeah.
And that's the last three?
No, that, that'll be the five or six, yeah. And then, and then what the idea is that you get that five or six and then you bring back three. And we always recommend that you bring back three and not two. Because if one was to pull out for some reason, maybe because of their fear of word getting out about them or something like that, then you, you have less of a choice with, with two, right? So we always try to come up with three. And, and we ask people at each stage, we, we say, now, look, if, if, we want you to be totally committed to this. And if, if you get an interview, that means that you're going to take this job unless something happens that's a total surprise to you. But if, you know, because they, they usually say, well, what's the board like? They want to know that along with, is it a confidential search? They want to know what the board. And what we always suggest that they do is that they watch your meetings. Your meetings and how you interact with each other. Yeah. So anyway, that, that's what we're suggesting in terms of how does that slate size sound to you? Does that sound reasonable?
And when you're saying slate size, that's the number of candidates that you would invite, invite in for that interview?
We would bring to you and say.
The show, right.
Here's, here's the slate.
You would narrow.
Let's, let's say we would come to you on a Monday night and say, here's the slate that we're, that we've pre-scheduled. And then you tell us, okay, and, and it's always, we always tell the candidates, we're going to recommend you and schedule you, but the board has the ultimate decision. They might switch out number four for number eight. And so, so that's, that's what we bring to you. And yeah, and that's what we tell people ahead of time. But then we would suggest that you bring in and you interview them. Maybe three of them on a Friday night, a Friday afternoon, and two or three of them on Saturday, if that works. Or if you want to do Thursday, Friday, Saturday kind of thing, whatever works for you. But we don't recommend that you talk to all six in one shot.
Because how long did you said the interview was that you structured?
Yeah, it's almost two hours.
Yeah.
By the time you take a little break in between it. And then you got to think, maybe you want a little dinner break or a lunch break or something like that. So that's, that's our suggestion. How does that sound in terms of the size of the slate?
Sounds appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then narrow it down to three. And then, and our recommendation for the second round is that you spend a day with the people. And you bring a spouse or significant, significant other if it's appropriate. And they come in and they, they get a tour of the district. But it's a windshield tour, so they don't get out of the car. So they don't, it's not likely to be identified. They spend some time with you, they have dinner with you in the evening and the interview. And we can get that scheduled eventually, but that's, that's a more involved kind of thing. And then, then do an exit interview at, at the very end. So, and we recommend that you, you have three come back for that. And we'll meet with you at the end of the first round and do a debrief. And we'll help you using that profile, how do these people measure up to that profile? And use that to narrow it down to, to the three. And then we'll, we'll also help you, I, I think I, I mentioned this, we'll, we'll help you with the script. We'll ask you for suggested questions that you have for the script of the interview. And then we'll put it together, we'll structure it and cluster similar questions on similar subjects together. You usually get a chance in, in, say, in about a, about 75 minutes, an hour and 15 minutes of questions and answers. Usually 12 to 15 questions is, is what you're going to do in, in that kind of an interview. And then give it a candidate an opportunity to make an opening statement and then ask you questions at the end. And then we'll also help you with the second round interview. I mean, you'll tell us, here's a question we didn't get to ask this person first time. We want to ask it in the second round and so on. And we'll take notes on that and compile an outline for you for the second round. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. We, we also suggest that when it comes to internal candidates, there's a likelihood that you may have that you have them rise to the same level as the external candidates. And so it's, it's fairness both ways. Sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Settle?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we also recommend that at the very, at the outset, that you don't put any restrictive qualifications like a PhD, for example, at the outset. You may want to think about that as we get closer and you look at the profile. You may want to say superintendent experience preferred. But if somebody's been in a, a larger district as a assistant or deputy superintendent, you might want to allow that kind of thing. So, so we, we suggest that you keep the funnel wide at, at the outset and then narrow it down as you go. What we'll do is we'll do somewhat of a generic vacancy notice. And then we'll put that out there on our website soon. And then we'll come back and modify that once you've identified the profile so that the vacancy notice describes the profile. Okay? Okay, so we're on the next one. Okay, we've already talked about the, the interviews, the first round, second round. Do you prefer to do those interviews, the first round, in person or virtually?
That's like with the sixth candidate.
Yes.
Yeah. Virtually.
Virtually, yeah.
Yeah, virtually.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no expenses involved, so that'll be a virtual interview. Okay. We'll probably show up though at the end in person just to debrief with you.
Right.
It might, it might just work out better if we do that. Okay, and then we can talk about the background checks. We'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll do a, a background check too. And we, we always are pretty firm with candidates and getting them to disclose to us any things that might be problematic but explainable. And so we'll, we'll do that and, and we'll do that. And we can talk about the other kind of background check later as we get closer to that. So you can look at what your options are. Have you had a chance to look at what the advertisement options are? There, there are three different packages in there. With the timeline, we would not recommend the third option. The first or second option would, would be adequate. Would give you enough publicity. You're going to get a lot of people coming to our website. We, our website, if you haven't been on it, lists all the superintendencies that, that are available throughout the country, whether our firm is doing them or some other firm is doing them. Yeah, it's in that glass.
Can you talk, hey Jay? And this.
And I also would, would recommend, in addition to one of those two packages, that you look at the Alice, Alice and NAPSE. So that's the Latin American Superintendent Association. And NAPSE is the National Alliance of Black School Educators. And that's, that's like $500 or $600 and it's well worth it to, to get, get the ad out there.
I would say we definitely want to do those two.
Yes.
Alice and NAPSE.
Yeah. And how about the other, what are you, what are your thoughts on the other one? Let's see here, can you get this in front of me?
What do most people do?
Middle one.
Huh?
The middle one.
The middle.
Yeah, the, the middle option.
Oh, the Alice and the.
Package two, I think he's talking about.
Package two, yeah.
Two.
So the group ads and education week, that's a pretty popular. And also you're, you're online listening with AASA, including a spotlight preferred and feature upgrades. So.
Can you, can you give some information about like what's the, what's the increase in value? Like, I mean, what's the applicant pool look like with none of the three? And, I mean, do you have any sense of like how, how much better is the candidate pool?
It's, it's better if, if there's some national advertising.
Sure.
If there's, if there's some advertising in, in either the AASA Bulletin or Ed Week. Those are where people look a lot. But it gets the word out. Now, I will also tell you that we get about 18,000 hits a month on our website, which is fairly good. It's, it's not huge, but it's fairly good. And, and that might be a little dated. That, that was, that was information about a year ago. But it might be more than that now because we, we've just redone our website and it's a little more accessible for people. But, so that's, that's a good listing. But I do think for the $520 at Alice and NAPSE, that's, that's a good, that's very worthwhile. I, I would suggest at least something with AASA and Ed Week. So you get two group ads in Ed Week in the second option or one in the first option. And. It's up to you. You get, you get the top listing in, in Ed Week in the second option. What are your thoughts?
I mean, I just want to make sure that we get the best applicant pool that we can. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I'd go with package two.
Is that package two with the Alice and?
And then add the, add the Alice and NAPSE.
And that, okay.
Okay. How we doing? Coming down the home stretch. We'll, we'll get you some information on, on salary infringement benefits. And, you know, a recommendation was that you don't use a range, you don't put out a range now or, or even later. Because everybody wants the top of the, the range. What, what we suggest is you think in terms of a, a total package. And you got plenty of time to think about that. You don't, we don't want you to think about that without adequate information. So we'll get you some information on salaries of similar school districts. And get that, get that to you so you can look at that and have that as a perspective. And then residency within the district, children attending schools. Does it go without saying?
Yes.
Yeah, that is important.
And we, we have that conversation with everybody when we're doing the screening interviews. If there's any hesitancy, we pursue that and ask them about that. But if we know that the board is, is clear on this, then that, that makes it easier for us. Okay, and then is Colleen also the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
She is.
Okay. So we've got that. And you know, you can see the superintendent search page probably.
Well, we discussed it and we're going to do a separate landing page that is.
Can she do a mic? I can't hear you. Oh, Colleen.
You want to come up here to the mic?
Yeah.
Colleen, do you want to come up to the mic?
Yes, we, we discussed today and we'll have a separate landing page for this. And we'll house it under the Board of Education. And we will have all the components that you've listed here. And that will be our main hub that we will link to when we do our other promotion via our newsletter and our other communication tools such as social media and things like that. So we'll have it all established for you.
And so we'll have somebody from HYA be in touch with Colleen and they'll exchange links. So when somebody goes on HYA's website and they're looking at an application, they'll also see something in, next to the description of the position where they can click and go to your website. And, okay, so final item here is communication with the media. Who represents the board to the media? Board president? Okay. And we're available if, if you want us to talk to you about some things that you're talking to them about. So, but we, we prefer not to communicate directly with, with the media because that's your responsibility. However, if you say to us, you can talk to them about this aspect of the search, then we'll do that.
Okay.
And, yeah. Okay?
Sounds good.
Let's see. Wow. Okay. So you've got the correct phone numbers for all three of us here. Calvin or Chris, if you're still there, was there anything that I should have said that I didn't? Little louder, Calvin. Is he back? Chris, anything you want to say?
Short answer.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hi, anything that, that you wanted to emphasize or add to what was talked about?
No, Peter, you covered it really well. I, I was just encouraged the board to think, you know, very strategically about the composition of your focus groups and the others that you want us to interact with. You know, we want to make sure, for example, that you don't get nothing, you don't get anything but our students in the student group. You, you want a broad cross-section of individuals in each of those groups so that you have as many voices represented as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely agree.
Good.
Thank you, it's the only thing I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Now, you all had some expectations coming here tonight. Is there anything that you were hoping we would talk about that we didn't talk about tonight?
I, I just have one question. Has this process, you've been doing this for a while, I take it, has it changed any in the last, I don't know, year or two? You know, education is, can always be a political issue, but it feels like the heat, at least in terms of what we've experienced.
Yes.
Has been turned way up. And depending on what, I mean, we're doing a national search.
Yes.
I could imagine some people would say, well, is the state that I'm looking at, Iowa, is that the place where I want to go? Have you ran into anything like that? Should we expect things like? Have you ran into anything like that? Should we expect things like that in the search?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, things have, things have changed dramatically. One thing that has changed is the, the turnover of superintendencies. It used to be about 15% of the superintendent positions would turn over each year. And some locations, particularly urban locations, would turn over more frequently. But on average, it was about 15% of the superintendencies. Now it's up closer to 25% turning over in the last few years particularly. Not only because of the COVID pandemic and the other political issues that that have surfaced. But there's, there's just a lot more going on with school boards and at school board meetings and some of it is purposefully done to, to, to influence from a, a political agenda, as you know. And so that has implications for people when you talk to them and well, that's one of the top questions they ask, what are things like there? And again, we suggest that they watch school board meetings because we can tell them what we hear, what we read, but people are, are looking at that and.
So is that something, you know, I think this board has been very united on most of these issues that have arisen and, you know, confronted us. And I know quite a bit of our community is united on those things as well. Is there, is that just kind of something we should try to lead on and try to present a united front?
Yes.
As much as possible, okay?
Yes, that, that's, that's a helpful thing. No doubt about it.
Thanks.
And.
Any additional comments or questions? Well, Peter, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For joining us tonight and leading us through this process. We certainly look forward to meeting Chris and Kelvin throughout the process, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, and with no further business, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, thank.